... Jump three. Way. Straight and drop. One, two, three. Words. My shit got the chipper. Were you in my? Let's bring it back across the street.
Kind of been... It's that last one. This'll be what the third or fourth. Let's try.
Yeah, amazing. Three, four. I'll try.
She won't, she won't pass the faith. H A.
I don't think.
Everywhere. I really don't know. Just a guess I would say there.
Don't listen to them.
Just a guess.
I'll go B.
I was saying, all structural. You don't want to... They're thirty, they're fifty. How old are you? They're little, but they need...
I do.
Oh.
Huh?
I'm asking you.
Come on. Good day.
I'll put mine.
Hold, hold, hold. Are you calling in? My foot was there now, probably. Is that? My foot was there now. Sure. Oh. They square wheels on me. No, that was my foot.
Yeah, and I'm excited that we can have the usual. But the air is safe. Hmm. I just...
When did that come to you?
All right, a little troubling with that. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, mine's... Mine's going better off.
Oh.
Fifteen minutes.
We're all H I S, now you guys.
That's right. You watch what I feel.
The fox on the wall is getting close, I think. It says six and mine wasn't, so... Mine didn't quite say six yet. We'll talk about getting started here and then. Maybe trying to get everything together is what time it's starting. See some houses in front of us, like? All the way? Okay, we have a forum. It's like we'll get this meeting started. Samuel, would you give our indication tonight?
Heavenly Father, how grateful we are for your love and grace. And Lord, we thank you for the opportunities you gave us to serve. We'd ask Heavenly Father that we would do what's right for the city, for its citizens. And we just ask Heavenly Father that you bless every effort you do. For what is now guided us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Okay, we have two sets of minutes that they've been reckoned with tonight. Uh, February the twentieth and March the sixth. What's your pleasure? Let's make a vote for these. Who made those? Samuel?
Okay.
Carrie second.
There is a correction. Hang on a second. On the... On the motion on the nominating... Come back to the red board, I'll say it right here real quick. Can you see? Should be two. That was the other.
Wasn't it the high desert that people was?
But...
What's the addition?
Um, he says on appoint Robin at Park and Rec, it should be three yeses, two noes.
But that was the other one. Well, I thought I was the only one.
Okay. We're not getting corrected. Y'all all hear that? With all the, uh, preparation to the Park Recreation Committee, there was a nomination, there was three yeses and two noes, the minute said one no and one sent it. So with that correction, we have a motion in the second. With that correction, would you permit it to... As we were having proof of it, with a correction. And that's, uh, five for. And we just took that. We put that in there. Mr. Jimmick? All right. Have anything on the financial statement? Let's look at it.
I have another question.
Okay.
You know, you... I came up here and you explained that, uh, that street lights.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. I, yeah, okay. So, oh, we don't pay one of the department budgets before?
I thought it said that around about fourteen dollars a month, seventeen dollars a year.
Right. Right. And for this month, it's only eleven dollars.
Or you look at...
That's the rea... That's the reason I'm asking, because you did tell me that, and I remember that, and I looked. And it's only eleven bucks this month.
Well, I just got to look at it. I didn't see that.
Depending on, I'll have to go out and print the report. Depending on the way that it's ranked, she could have been more than a million. But the month enclosed, um, because the, uh, co-op light bill is five dollars a co-op deal. Uh, because we, I think we only have a couple of streetlights for the foreigners, anything else for the T X U. Probably that co-op deal.
So this, this month's bill is not only that.
That would, would be what it indicates to me, because Harverson's been doing something out the table. I would have to pull it up and see if that people was paying. The month before, that is all that's...
We have, we only have one or two streetlights that's on the REA.
Right.
So that was...
Theirs is less than six dollars a month.
Eleven dollars, a high fifty.
So what you're telling me is we haven't paid for this month's regular light bill?
Probably, it wouldn't indicate it was. Either that or it was paid out in incorrect, like a transposition. I'm just going to go out.
This year's one has died more than a lot of times.
Okay. Well, I, I just went back and I noticed that, you know, there were... What happened? And that one wasn't, so I kind of wondered what it was. Okay.
Criminals got it on the REA, didn't couple it together this time. Okay. Financial statement, you want to prove it?
Somebody.
Did you remove? Jimmy second. All in favor, raise your hand. And that's five for, none against. Okay. Departmental reports. Roy, you have anything? Steven? Do you want to discuss the limbs of that?
Yeah, we were, got down, we made most of the city initial run. And we were going to keep chipping three, four times a month until the day they came and got the chipper. But we're supposed to get it back, we should get it back, maybe in April, but he said probably no later than May. And also, we're going to shut down the dump site out there on April the ninth. That's the day that I got the job in with it, so I just figured it'd be a good day to shut the dump site down. Because we're starting to King Lake quite a bit of garbage out there now. Not, not many.
If we have to, we get too much in the yard, we can go in a chipper for a day or two.
Yeah. Or we can pick it up and we just, uh, we can do something with it. But we should have the chipper back by May.
Samuel?
I don't know.
Uh, committee reports, we have one here, Park and Recreation. You have those. You got the minutes left then?
You have yours. You have yours somewhere.
I know Park and Recreation gives me, you don't tell us what y'all, you report on that if you like. You come in real handy.
Um, we met in regular session on March seventh at six o'clock. Um, we discussed again the tenure development plan. Um, we had a presentation by Jeremy Bullard. We discussed and requested adding a walk-in track pool and multi-use court unit plan, as well showing the creek and the pond. A motion was made to present the plans with requested additions this March twenty-seventh for exception by Leonard Hudson, taken by Robbie Seegroth. Motion was made by Robbie Seegroth to test the residential Wayne Swine for second by Leonard Hudson, motion carried. We had a motion by Tony McLean to recommend Jeremy Bullard perform an expiry term vacated by Wayne Swine for second by Robert Allen, motion carried, so he was going to say. May you do it?
Uh, I don't know where y'all are going to meet again, before y'all meet, because that's not the... Steve and I went down, we took the wheel, we rolled, we rolled that area from the closest part of the creek where it was running in a southwestern direction.
Right.
And run it, and run it, we got all the way over to the corner of our side, and it was six hundred and forty-nine feet.
But I saw this end?
Yes.
Six hundred and forty-nine?
Before they were discussing what would fit in there, I just thought I'd tell you, we hadn't seen anybody tell since then, but we're getting on that off.
So it's six hundred and forty-nine feet?
Yeah. Does anybody have a public request tonight? Anybody out here want to make a request? Okay.
Yes, I'm Mary Jo Lynn, and from, and we're getting ready to open a store over here in what's known to me as the Ocho, is a building. And I was a little bit concerned about the safety of the sidewalk there. I was wondering if there was any plans for repair down the road. And a lot, all of my customers are women, and a lot of them are elderly.
We have discussed it, but we can't give you an answer to that because this month it shouldn't happen.
Right.
But we have discussed it.
I understand.
And Steve and I discussed it again today.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm Cullen Thompson, I just, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but on Mr. Collins' letter, I think it's been tabled, is to be brought in.
We'll get, we'll get to that in just a minute, okay?
Perfect.
Can we do that?
Perfect.
This is, this is, the public request is where any of our citizens want to come in and address the council. They have an opportunity to do that, even though we can't deal with it. But you're on the agenda.
Great.
Okay?
Ryan, I have a question.
Okay.
On the correction on the minutes. I have written down here four to one, and Jerry wrote it on his, is four to one.
Well, Jimmy says he didn't vote.
I voted against it. When I voted, I voted against it. When they said four to one, I thought they were counting me.
You voted against it that night, or have you changed your mindset?
No, I voted against it that night. I said right here, and I thought she counted me.
Well, there was three of us counting four to one.
It's not going to change the outcome anyway, so I think with the correction, the minute was three or two or four to one, it's pretty not going to make any difference. Is that okay with y'all? Okay, now we'll get into the old business. We're, I'm moving along tonight, and I'm not trying to rush y'all, but we, uh, Jerry has to be out to fire meeting at twenty to seven, I believe, and I'm trying to get most of the agenda out before then, so y'all bear with it if we, if we try to tell you all this. Uh, old business, we, we put this back on the table again in, in answer to, to your question, uh, to consider application from the William W. Collins, uh, requesting the zoning of the two hundred by approximately fourteen hundred foot on North Collin Freya. That is on the west side of the access road. Uh, this is not the school property, or property next to the school. And this has been tabled a couple of times, so, you know, we need to, we need to do something with this tonight, on where the other. I think you all read Mr. Collins' letter that he sent us, and, uh, they want to rezonate this because they do want to do some advertising over there. Um, how about, uh, open it up for discussion?
This, uh, this man has something to say on this?
Yeah, I, uh, you're not the same fellow that came before, are you?
I've, I've been here before, yes, sir.
You, you were...
They're through.
He's not the one.
I'm not the one.
What was your name?
My name's Cullen Thompson.
Cullen.
Right.
Cullen Thompson, okay. You want to, uh, to talk to the council, uh, trying to get, uh, to see if they had any discussion, because this thing can end up and down to a rock down, but we'd be glad to entertain, uh, you know, your suggestions or whatever you'd like to add to it.
Uh, thank you. Um, council and Mr. Mayor, I, again, my name's Cullen Thompson, I'm with outdoor signs and Mr. Collins, there actually, there, there are three of us, and, uh, I think Larry Almore came up here and met with you and Mr. Collins a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to address just the, the, the advertising sign issue, uh, if I can, real briefly, and we're, we've been in this business a long time, and, you know, the bottom line with it really is that, that, that we're here because there are a lot of businesses that a lot, that, that need to capture the traffic that's on the highways to get people off the highways and to do business with them. Um, and it goes all kinds of different directions. There's hundreds of miles of highway that cut through here, and people are blown by, and, you know, there are signs on the freeway, you know, a place like M and M that's on the freeway, they've got to sign up, people can see and exit there. But there are lots of businesses that aren't, and if there's, if the people aren't allowed to know that they're, then, um, then there's no way to pull the traffic off the highway to them, in somewhere like, you know, Independent Bank, or even the, even the hardware over here, or, you know, Baker A C, you've got developments, there's signs you see up and down the freeway for new residential developments, and somebody's buying a house there, um, they may be the bank, they may need the, you know, the heating and A C people, but if they don't have a way of knowing, then, then they don't, you're not able to pull them off the city, off the highway to, into the city to go find them. There are a lot of cities that use advertising signs like these, uh, you know, just to advertise themselves, and, you know, they're, you've got a beautiful city here, if people are blown by the highway, don't know you're necessarily here, and lots of cities use signs like these. It's just a way of capturing all this traffic here. Um, I mean, I think a classic example of, of really what it's all about, you guys do it, and, and, and most cities do, all cities probably do, they're, and they're water tower. People paint them colors, and they, you know, you've got How Bulldog, or most cities have a water tower on the highway that lets people traveling down the highway know they're there and the name of the city. And that's, you know, what you're doing, you're advertising to those folks on the highway. So what we're talking about here, I mean, Mr. Collins has made a generous offer, um, he wants to use, be able to use his property. It's, it's out on the stretch of concrete out there, there's been a, there was an issue about the high school, and we've addressed that. Um, I know, Mr. Haynes, you, you brought that up, and we've addressed that, that that is very easy to accomplish, and, and we are, we've always done that as a matter of practice, but if there's something we need to do to satisfy the city regarding, you know, content on signs, then we're happy to do that, because it's just part of our normal practice, uh, you know, as you travel the highway here, you don't see very much that is, I think, of any, you know, of any controversial nature at all. Again, we're, what we're all about is, uh, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be around if there weren't businesses that needed, uh, and wanted to, to be able to grab the folks traveling the highway, so, and like I said, the, the water towers is a classic example, it's what cities do, just to let people know that they're as well. So we really appreciate your consideration of this request.
Y'all any questions, Mr. Thompson?
Does Mr. Collins not have any plans to develop a code?
Uh, not that I know of.
On each side, you talking about putting that one wrong?
One. I have to talk about one right now, we, there possibly been two at one point, but I believe we're talking about just one right now, for the sake of...
I'd like to make a statement concerning this letter that was written to the mayor and given to us. I, I really feel like it's... It's a little... I don't know, out, outlying. I think he's trying to intimidate us by saying that the money that he intended to use for those, from those signs for the kids at the school, and he makes it sound like in the letter to me, that if we don't approve these signs, then he might consider not making that money available to those students. Or money, excuse me, money, available to those students. And I feel like that's a little, you know, intimidating or something, I just, I just don't, I didn't feel comfortable with the way that letter was written. And I know it was addressed to the mayor, but I think all the council members got one. And the way I read that is that if we don't decide to let him put up a sign, then, you know, monies might be, um, restricted from the, you know, I mean, that's the way I read it.
I'm not, I might add to your statement, my change, I, you know, I, I think everybody knows that money's not a problem for Mr. Collins. I'm not trying to sway you either way, I'm saying I don't think he was trying to intimidate us, because he gives to people all over this county. Uh, I think he was just trying to say this was one way that he thought of, that he could put some money into scholarship for the school. When we, when we were doing work over here at the old Christian church, which was a community center at that time, he put in money on that. He's given money for the, uh, nonprofit thing around Howe for a long time. In fact, uh, he was probably the last one, uh, oh baby, you remember? You were here in seventy-three, seventy-four, but wasn't he one of the last ones on the board of that first Christian church that had that old building? Anyways, they gave that to the city of Howe as a, as a, uh, venue for receiving funds to be used on non-budgeted items, and the interest that that endowment makes allows us, and we've used that for a long time too. I really don't, I'm not trying to...
Let me, let me read this last paragraph for record then, if you, if you don't mind.
Okay.
"As an additional gift to Howe ISD, I intended to apply all revenue from the proposed billboards to an endowed scholarship fund for the benefit of deserving Howe High School students. I am still willing to do this if all billboard concerns can be exponentially resolved so that my three rezoning requests can be approved to permit the erection of four billboards." Now, you know, somebody else might not read that the same way I read it, but...
I did, I did read it, I didn't read it that way. Now, if you're talking about approving all of them before any erasure's given, I would say that's not right. If you're talking about, we turn this down up here, if you wanted to approve this on the west side, if you wanted to donate that to a scholarship fund, I wouldn't see anything wrong with that.
Some of them may not know about the twenty-five thousand that he gave the city in memory of his mother and dad.
That's what I was discussing, getting down.
And the interest from it goes to pay the utilities at the museum. And then he has given a large donation to the museum also.
I would tell you...
Now, may I address this one second?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mr. Haynes, just, I talked to Mr. Collins about this, and, um, what he intended is, the way I understand he intended this, and I think is what, what you're saying, um, he made it real clear, this thing doesn't generate that much money. Um, and he kind of laughed, he didn't, the money means nothing to him, so what, what he kind of laughingly said was, I don't need the money, this is good use of property, it's, you know, I'd like to see it happen, I don't, I don't need it. And so he said, I'll give it to, I'll give it to the school, this, the school that you came up, and he understood that as, as, as the relation of these signs to the school, and he said, I'll be happy to donate to them, it doesn't, it's not something that really matters to me. So that's what he intended, is I'm sure.
I would, I would encourage you to forget about who asked for the zone change and the permanent. You may get somebody else asking for one. All of them. We shouldn't consider who's asking, or how, or what they're going to do with the money. I think our main concern is do we, do you want to allow billboards over there on that side of the road? We've got some down here, we've got them, you know, this is what you're going to ask.
What does the ordinance, what does our ordinance say? Do we have an ordinance?
We have an ordinance.
We just passed one.
Well, then we're going to abide by the ordinance.
You can allow it if you won't care.
I would think we would, we would just abide by the ordinance unless there's some compelling reason not to.
Well, at least I can get over here and say something. You know, but it's, it's a zoning, uh, commission.
Sam, they, they had an opportunity to appeal to the council if it was denied, and it was denied earlier, they are pleading to the council, so you're, one way or the other tonight, you're going to have to answer this, because if you, if it goes unanswered, you don't take a stand either way. You know? We're not going to ever get it off the table.
Well, planning and zoning turned it down, and we turned it down.
We didn't turn it down. You tabled it down.
Tabled it.
We turned that down up on the other side of the road.
Oh, they did.
Well, I go, I'll make a motion that we accept the planning and zoning recommendation.
Okay.
That's what we got them for.
Any further discussion before we get a second? Have a motion to accept planning and zoning recommendation. Now that we have a second.
I'll second it.
Give me seconds. You want, the, the motion states that you accept the planning and zoning recommendation, which was they deny?
We're rejecting the application.
All in favor of the motion? We have five for, none against. So I just, I answered your question. The other side of my business is to appoint Howe Community Library Board member to the unexpired term. Does anyone have a member to present? Is there a nomination from the floor to the council? Not a, I would recommend that we table this until someone has somebody, if somebody give any motion. Down under the table. Ob second. All in favor? Five for, none against.
Question.
Question.
Who's on that committee to find somebody? It's not even in front of the book. Not, it's not listed in the committee.
We, there's, there's far none other than that one committee to this.
Just whoever has some, they just said.
I nominate that a bit.
Not for this one, but not, there are others that might be.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. New business. Consider resignation of Wayne Swineford from Park and Recreation as valid reboard. What's your pleasure?
I'll move.
You're removed.
Okay.
Ob second. All in favor? Five for, none against. And let me say that, uh, I know Wayne Swineford, Swineford, and I think he's served us a, a good long time, and, and was a good board member, and I think that, I want to thank him for serving. Consider recommendation from Park and Recreation for appointment of vacant board position. Who was the... You read that one ago?
Jeremy Bullard.
Jeremy Bullard.
Jeremy Bullard. Is he the one that made the drawing of the park?
Yes, sir.
He's the one that made the blueprints of the future ten years.
Okay.
Says Wayne?
Jeremy.
Oh, Jer, Jeremy Bullard. Does anyone like to put his name in nomination?
I will.
You're removed.
I second.
Is there another nomination? Ob.
I'd like to put Sherri White back in there, and she wanted, just resigned, and she wanted to stay home.
Okay. Is there another? We have two nominations. Carrie, did you, you make motion?
Jerry second.
Jerry second. Now we have two.
We have Jeremy Bullard. Well, can you give me a, who is Jeremy Bullard? I, I don't know Jeremy.
Um, he's a dad, isn't he? He's one of the...
These are, please.
He's an assistant coach for baseball league, and he helps with basketball. He, I believe he has two small children, one is a five-year-old and one is a three-year-old. And he lives in here in Howe.
How long has he been?
I'm not sure.
Any idea? Guess?
I think three or four years.
He's the person hard where, where the lean is.
Okay, we have, we have two. We're going, we're going to find out which one you want, and then we will take the nomination in a second. Okay.
Is there a reason why they can't vote, can't say? Do we want to set, or?
Okay. Number one nomination was Jeremy Bullard. All that would like to see Jeremy Bullard on there, raise your hand. One, two, three. All that would like to see Sherri White on there, raise your hand. Two for Sherri. Will Carrie your motion for Jeremy Bullard still stand? Jerry, you're second. All, all in favor of Jeremy Bullard? One, two, three, still three. Okay. So Jeremy Bullard of Park and Recreation. So Jeremy Bullard of Park and Recreation.
Let me say something here. We, we got Park and Recreation over there, and they're, uh, you know, we went back and, and passed the thing that they recommended to us to, to lose the regulation that's set up, you know, the governor, the, these leagues and things. And then, uh, you know, if we keep putting these people over the leagues and all back on there, then you got, we got the same problem we had before, you got the same people overseeing what they're doing.
That may be true, OB, but we had a man here that was soccer commissioner, and when we, when we were one short, and I asked y'all to, to appoint him, and you said that you already committed to somebody, and we didn't appoint him. So I don't know, you know, I'm just taking whatever comes to the, to the council.
Well, but they're recommending this, you know, before we appointed them, now they are. So we go back to the library board, and who's still the, is the, the library board didn't make the recommendation, huh?
I think the reason they're recommending is because we don't have that set up under a committee, council committee to recommend like you do to B and Z and all that.
We do. That's what I think.
Is that Park and Recreation too?
I do, he and Carrie are Park and Recreation.
Okay.
He got a copy of the Park and Recreation agenda, but I didn't call him until then there was a vac-
The way I see it, we can have, we can have a council person, someone at the committee, bringing somebody recommended to the council, but if we, if somebody wants to make a nomination on the floor, then you all, you gotta vote. Everybody all decides, so I seen nothing wrong with it. But y'all wanna change that, you know, and, and say we're not gonna listen to anybody else, or let us know, and we'll put it, we'll change it.
Well, now, in my opinion, the Park and Rec Board knows who will work and who won't work. And they know their, what interest that person has, and I don't think that it makes any difference that if they're a coach for baseball or basketball or whatever. Because if their kid's playing, they're gonna be there, and they're gonna take more of an interest in it.
It still comes down to the council to vote.
Each, each, each one of the, uh, the members, I guess, has a vested, has a real vested interest, or they wouldn't be serving on that board. And certainly, I, I guess Sherri White, white, Sherri White, had a vested interest too. And for some reason, she chose to resign. And, you know, at some point in time, if there are another opening come up, I have no reason not to agree with putting her back on the board. As I see now, you know, they, they recommended, uh, another person apparently is interested.
What I'm saying, they can recommend somebody, if this council does not want that person, you want somebody else. They have the opportunity to not take that person.
That's true, but most of us, and that's why I asked, uh, that's why I asked Diana a question about Jeremy, because I don't know Jeremy, I don't know Sherri.
I met him, I met him the other night. I went down to the meeting when they, when they brought the blueprint of the park in. I met him that night, that's on the deal, and it's on the, first time I ever saw him. He seemed like a real nice, pretty young man, I don't know.
Well, what is the purpose of the Park and Recreation Committee then? I'm talking about them too. You misheard me.
Well, the Park and Recreation Committee purpose is not just to nominate people to serve on the board. And, you know, they, they-
But is that one of their jobs?
That's one of them, yeah. But what I'm saying, there might be somebody else that, that has somebody, and one of the other council person might have somebody they wanna recommend to the council. One of them, they don't have to just take the one, the two that's on the Park and Recreation Committee to do that.
But, I know, you see on the planning and zoning, Jimmy and I are on that, that committee. And we've, we've discussed it a couple times, you know, when there, somebody opened up. And I think I've talked to a couple of people on the planning and zoning, you know, just to ask them, hey, who do you think, or do you have any, do you have anybody? And I'm, I'm sure Jimmy's talked to other people too. So, you know, we, we have discussed it, and this is a little different. I guess it's a little different because there's, uh, I mean, we're dealing with children and stuff, but planning and zoning, we're just dealing with-
That's the reason when the, when the suggestion was made that I open it up to the council for other nominations. If other nominations come forward, we have to consider all of them.
You have your Park and Recreation Board, one, six, next, next page.
Well, this might have been an oversight, so I, I-
You know, that's what I- They recommend to this council, that's what they do. These, these committee members for the B and Z, Park Record, they bring their recommendation to the council. Most time the council approve, because there's nobody else says anything. No matter which agency it is.
Mr. Mayor, can I address the council, please?
Yes.
The, um, Park and Rec Board Advisory Board that is under OB and Carrie, it is a group right now of parents of very young children that are wanting to see this land developed into the park that your grandchildren and your children can play on. To be on the Park and Rec Board, you cannot be a commissioner. None of the commissioners of the different sports in Howe are eligible on the advisory board. But the ones that we're getting input from is the parents of all these children. We've had more involvement in the last three months than I've been on the board since we have, when the board was initiated. And to keep this positive influence, we wanna keep getting those people and be figure, well, how do I get on the Park and Rec Board? Well, when there's an opening, you know, your name is registered to the State Council, and upon the City Council's approval, then you're appointed to the board, but not until that day. So that's what we're looking at, is for people that have a vested interest in this park, that their children or their grandchildren will be able to enjoy the quality once it is protected.
It sounds to me like the, the board and the committee needs to talk, obviously.
They do, I know.
Well, that's good, I mean, and, uh, you know, there's apparently a little difference in opinion here, so that's why I dropped my recommendation.
Well, OB is the chairman of it, and I'm the other one that's on it. I did not know he was gonna nominate Sherri White at the last meeting.
Well, I think it was done proper, and, and, and I think, I mean, the council is the last side. No matter who's, it might be four people recommended out here, they might be one, which one of the committee members. But then if you, if you take all four, all six of those, and you go down line, and you find out which one you wanna enter into, to motion to appoint, the council has to do it, so it's all done legally. Let's go ahead to the public hearing, I'm trying to get Carrie out of here. I think we beat that horse to death. Uh, consider this a public hearing, if you would. Uh, the first ordinance, number five twenty-seven, is to amend the ordinance on the curfew violation. And I believe what has changed there is the amount of the violation then, is that correct? The unit for re-adoption, so, uh, if anyone has anything to address about that, go ahead and do it now. The next item on the, uh, public hearing was to consider the application from, uh, Ronnie and Diane Mazingo requesting re-subdivision of, uh, about a half acre down here on the Jay Haney survey. Let's take, let's take the, uh, end of public hearing, and then let's go and take the, uh, extension or the amendment or whatever you wanna call it to the curfew ordinance, and handle it first. Okay? What's your pleasure, or do you wanna open it up for discussion on ordinance number five twenty-seven, the curfew ordinance?
As much as I know this, there's just update ordinance.
Updates ordinance, yes.
Most of the update ordinance are-
Okay, and it is update, Sam seconds. All in favor, raise your hand. That's five for, none against, and a- The next item was to, um, consider the application from the Mazigos, and the B and Z met last night, and, uh, I have their, uh, letter here. Uh, a public hearing is held on three nineteen. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that your honorable body approve the requested re-subdivision of the existing acreage, uh, located in the Jay Haney survey, tract five four four. Motion of Sam Haney, second of Kim Pike, motion carried five to zero. What's your pleasure?
Is that, uh, the last two lots down there where they're building them?
It's, it's the two on the west, west side, OB. There's two left there on that Rickett Street, on the east side of Rickett.
On the east side.
It's on the east side of Rickett, but it's on the west side of, uh, the Mazigos. There were four lots there, and two of them were platted years ago when Mr., what was his name?
Amon.
Amon. When Mr. Amon had his outfit, and these were not platted, so this is what they're trying to get done, and-
These are the two on the- The south end, the on the-
West, west side. Yes, on the side of-
New street, right?
It'd be west of, of Rickett, where he is, built on the east side of Calder.
And that's why I say this, uh, on the Caler Street, where they're building down. Are we gonna open that street up?
We've already got, made an interloper agreement with the county, and Johnny's gonna start up soon again. Y'all voted to, to have me do an interloper agreement last month.
So they approved, right?
Yes. OB, move Jimmy seconds, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's five for, none against. Okay. Carrie, we're gonna still get you out of here, I think. Uh, the next item is to approve a resolution, zero one zero zero one. This is a resolution to suspend the effective date of the TXU gas distribution request to rate change and take a ninety-day moratorium to study this. Discussion? Not with entertaining motion? Now move, do we have a second? Carrie, second? All in favor of the motion? Five for, none against, okay. Next item is consider TXU's gas request for changing the rate. Martha has already been down and talked to me, and, and she gonna talk to you for a minute. I told you, you know, we wasn't gonna carry this out all night, you know.
How come Martha doesn't come and talk to us for a rate decrease?
She owes the big money.
Martha, next time you come, tell us you're gonna cut a rate, all right?
Well, um, I did come and talk to you last time about the gas prices.
I'm just teasing, you understand.
And, uh, I brought your printout to show that, because this one is- Will that work? At least the gas price is going down. So I just wanted to update you on that, to let you know that there is relief in sight. Oh, really? Who gets you?
Yeah, we'll get you, I wish you'd be better with your life.
I guess while it's in this, I should just-
It's coming down?
Is he leaving?
You scared him off.
You scared him off.
Well, the first time I've done a resolution that is to spend before I presented, but-
Well-
I knew y'all were gonna do that, so it's not a problem.
That's not a problem, because I prayed if we, if we did, if we, if we did something, if, if we had said, no, we don't want to, to accept your rate, then we would have been in trouble. And we'd said, we do want to accept your rate, we'd been in trouble. And so I did that at first, so we'd make sure that we have the ninety-day moratorium.
I think you made wise.
Thank you, I'm glad somebody thinks I made a wise decision.
Well, uh, and I'll tell you why in a minute. Uh, on March the second, TXU filed, uh, an intent to adjust the current rates to deliver natural gas to residential, commercial, and industrial customers in Howe and a hundred and twenty other cities. This is a little bit different, uh, than how TXU Gas has filed their rate in the past. It being that we used to come to each individual city, and we used to make a filing for a certain percentage increase in each one of those cities. Due to a previous rate case that we did file with the city, and that case being heard before the Railroad Commission, the way the commission came back and pretty much told us how they would like to see future rate cases done, we have kind of gotten a template of how we are going to present our cases in the future. One of them, it makes economic, economical, uh, sense to do that, and the other is, we are trying to get a, a rate straight across the board with all of our customers that is the same. So that everybody is pretty much on the same page, and the Railroad Commission would like to see it that way. I will tell you that, that rate case was the case that you probably heard a lot about in the city of Dallas, and it was taken to the Railroad Commission and settled last year. Uh, so that's why it's a little bit different. So a hundred and twenty-one cities were in the briefing that I believe that y'all did, did get. It goes as far as Munster kinda curves around, uh, the more metroplex area comes through. Uh, the Sherman, the Grayson County area goes to Paris, south to Tyler and that area down in there. So all of those are pretty much together in this rate case. Uh, the last rate case that we did present, uh, to Howe that was passed was ten in eighty-two, and that was for eighteen thousand five hundred and one dollars, and it was an eight point twenty-two percent increase. That was done on a test year of twelve thirty-one eighty-one. This current test year is, uh, ended September of last year. Uh, keep in mind that since that last rate case in eighty-two, um, that you had, that the Consumer Price Index has increased eighty-four percent. I will tell you then, in all these hundred and twenty-one cities that we have filed, the rate cases go as far back as yours in eighty-two up until, uh, November of last year. Currently, in the eastern region system, we are asking for a little under seven million dollars. And in the city of Howe, we are asking for a ninety thousand nine hundred and seventy dollar increase, or about twenty-two point two-two percent increase. That is broken down, as you can see here on the right, as to the revenue, commercial and industrial revenues, and the service charges. And I kinda wanna share with you some of these service charges, because I don't think y'all read the great big book that we filed with the mayor, unless you're just into a lot of information. Those service charges are made up of a connect charge, which is currently twenty dollars, and that's going up to thirty-five. That's for us to send someone out to set the meter and to, um, make sure that all the connections in the house are safe when the, the gas is turned on. A delinquent-
Wouldn't that, pardon me, wouldn't that be a charge to the homeowner?
Yes, yes. That is, that is a charge.
That's not a rate change.
Well, it's-
It is kind of a service charge that-
It's a service charge change that is stated in the rate. And the rate is, the rate that you approve in this city is the guideline of how we charge the customer. So we go to that rate to look at what we charge the customer.
When you say rate, it seems to me that that's the charge you're gonna charge for cubic, what do you, cubic feet of gas?
Yes, but, uh, in that rate, it addresses a lot of different items.
Well, yeah, service to, you know, to keep the pipeline running and all that stuff.
And the rate that we charge the customer, and these are part of the charges that go to the customer.
But that homeowner, he, it ought to be a one-time charge, because he's only gonna hook up the, he's only gonna hook up-
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not a rate.
This is, this is a, a, a connect charge.
Okay, a connect charge.
And it's stated in the, in the, in the rate that's approved by the city.
Where's that going to affect?
Pardon?
The rate charge?
Uh, this, depending on the action that is taken tonight, y'all have already voted to suspend. Otherwise, we would put it into effect April the sixth. Now you've suspended for ninety days, and we're looking at, at probably, uh, after all the, all the process that's gone through, it'll be July the fifth. A delinquent notification charge is another, uh, service charge change currently. There is no charge for us to go out and tag in, in the city and to send someone out to tag lifting another delinquent. It's four dollars and seventy-five cents. But the best one is a return check charge. Currently, that's only five dollars to the customer. Those of you in business know what it costs, and we are only asking for sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents on a return check. Most places in a bank, it's twenty, twenty-five, even- cents on a return check, most places in the bank, it's twenty, twenty-five, even thirty in some of them, so that is something that makes up those service charges, I wanted you to know what made that, what made up that part. Howe, this will affect the customer, and currently, you have a winter rate, a summer rate, we are going to one rate straight across the board, a residential customer that uses, and we're using an average customer, five MCF per month in the winter, would realize an increase of nine dollars and thirty-nine cents per month. Now, take into consideration, part of that is the, the customer charge that we have each month on the bill, and that's, that's the charge to go out and read the meter each month, and to send you, process the bill and send it to you. In the summertime, average is ten dollars and sixty-four cents per month, now, I look at bills, a typical family of four, that, two of them that I knew that lived in the town here, they either use one MCF in the summer or none, so in the summertime, they would only see an eight dollar charge if they didn't use any gas to that customer, but we spread it out over twelve months, divided it up, commercial customer in the winter, thirty MCF, would see a twenty-seven dollar twelve, twelve cent per month cha-, increase, in the summer, a thirty-four and sixty-two dollar increase. Currently, in Howe, you have five hundred and eighty-nine customers, this is something that's come up, that people wanted to know how many meters we had, so I had them put this on the sheet for you, so you know exactly how many customers that we are looking at that would affect in your city, it is broken down. Our total capital investment from January of ninety-seven through September of two thousand is twenty-five million dollars in this east region distribution system, and the system net, net investment is seventeen point fifty-three million, or a thirty-five percent investment, that is broken down into service lines and meters, economic growth, safety and replacement, and request relocation. Our net investment in Howe has increased fifty-two thousand three hundred and three dollars. I had them list some of those projects, this is just a slice of the pie during that period of time, that shows the investments that we have made on the second page, and that is to supply service, and some of it is to do the repairs to our current system, but we wanna make sure that we do have a safe, reliable system for our rate payers and for your citizens. So currently, we've been able to control our labor costs, and you probably will see here that we've had an eight percent decline in our labor force, in our costs there, but our return on our investment is only three point eight four percent. We learned in our rate case before the, the railroad commission, that they would grant us a nine point seven five percent return, and I know that nine point six nine is a great return on your investment, but if you're going to have investors invest in your company so that you can do business, you have operating expenses, and you do go for a bond writing, you have to show them that you do have an investment and a return on your money, so that's why we're asking for an increase on our investment. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those, if anything comes up between now and then, please don't hesitate to call me, I know that there is a meeting tomorrow that the city of Dennison has put together for the whole hundred and twenty-one cities, are, are y'all planning on attending?
I'll be there at one thirty.
I think that, that's wise, because all of y'all can come together and discuss and look at what has been proposed before you, one of the other options was to accept what the rate that was before you, and it had a favored nation in there saying that you accepted it, you would take no action, you would wait to see what happened in the ninety day period, if there was a decrease, you would receive that, that benefit, you would not receive an increase if that should occur, you would, would not receive any type of expenses that reoccur in that ninety days to be surcharged back to the customers. By doing the resolution and, and suspending any costs that are incurred, that will come back as a surcharge, and that's something that a lot of people don't understand, so I'll be glad to, to go with that, if, if any questions do arise, or you could just accept it, or you could deny it, so there's a lot of options out there for you, that you have chosen a resolution to suspend and to check into it, and I understand that.
Unless these people know more about your language and your charges and how you do it than I do, I think we have to have someone look at it that is educated in that, to take it up with the railroad commission, say, are these people justified in that, and if the railroad commission says yes, then, you know, we're just real happy, if they say no, then it'll be up to them to iron it out.
The consultants will, will tell you what that margin book says.
They will.
And I've learned a lot.
Been earned done that, Martha.
You got this three point eight, eight, three point eight cent here, return, how many, how many dollars are you talking about?
I couldn't tell you, but I can find out.
Huh? You got it, you got everything else?
It's in that, it's in this book back here, if you'd like me to look it up.
You got, you got all this expense, and there's lying down here, and, and-
We can look in that book and-
Increased investment seventeen, but you don't show what the three point eight four is, how many millions are we talking about there?
We'll find out for you. Like the mayor said, that's why we have those consultants that can't even-
That's right.
We better lie y'all here but that.
But I'll find out for you.
Problem, problem.
We can know that, and there should be a, if everybody participates, it should be a hundred and twenty-one cities in Greenville tomorrow. I will be there representing Howe, all we, I'm sure all we're gonna do is, is find out what kind of language they're going to approach us with, and, and like I said, if, if they and the railroad commission say this is justified and fair, then I don't think we have a leg to stand on. If they say it's not, then they will, they will be the ones to mediate with TXU gas, it won't have to be us.
Who do we have lobbying for us?
Joe Dodden is, is-
I mean, for the dis-
Heading, heading this up, he is, he is an attorney in Austin who has had a lot of influence and input in, uh, rates, both electrical, telephone, gas and all that, I think he will probably be headed to meeting up tomorrow, Martha.
You're Jeffrey Gang?
Jeffrey, well, it may be Jeffrey, yeah, well, one of the two, but both of them have worked in this, and they, I think one of them takes electricity, another takes gas, but it'll, it'll be done fairly, whatever.
I know that in, at Dennison city council meeting last night, they said they'd heard from about seven or eight cities, and they were looking at working with the consultants and having their report back by about midsummer.
We thank you.
Your hotline?
You're always welcome in our humble abode, even though we may not agree with you, Martha.
Just let me know what's going on.
Okay, hey, are we through?
Well, you're gonna communicate.
Yeah, I'm gonna communicate, but we, hey, listen, Dad, when we took on this thing, on the boundaries, we paid, I think, twelve hundred dollars so far to have this study done, they're still not through it, because there's one corner that, that these people need to work on further, and they're gonna be doing that with some of the title, with one title company that's on some abstracts, and if they get this one out, I don't, I don't think it's gonna cost us an arm and a leg, but it has cost us four hundred dollars more than we thought it would, because they have run into one, that they need to, to then work on, and I just wanna pass that on to y'all, in case somebody that lives out there starts fussing, that you tell them, we don't know yet, it's in the hands of the attorney and the, uh-
Surveyors.
Surveyors, and, and we can't do anything about it, so they're through. That's all I have, anybody that would like to go with me to Greenville tomorrow, you're welcome to do it, it's a long, long journey down there and back, especially when you have, when you're going on empty stomach, so, uh-
Well, the moral of that story is, even though you live-
I don't have time, I got another meeting prior to that.
Oh, well, I'll buy a Wossenberger.
Anyway, I don't know if they have Wossenberger down that part of the country, no.
Probably don't.
Anyway, unless y'all wanna stay longer, unless there is, we won't stay, we're general.